Welcome to everybody who possibly are tuned into this video conference this evening. Our first item for business this evening is a budget vacation or 2020, 2021 fiscal year tentative. I'll put that as tentative budget and I would like to turn this over to our treasurer, Marsha Adams for the presentation.
Thank you. Um, as requested and it is a very brief presentation, um, I will go ahead and share my screen. Uh, let's see, whoops, hey, um, that's not the one I'm at. Well, I just made you presenter. Okay, thank you. Um. One sec. There we go. Okay, can everybody see it?
No.
Great. So, welcome to our presentation. Um, I wanted to, uh, whoops. First of all, touch on the budget process for anyone who may be new to it or not familiar. In December, January-ish, um, the treasurer gives the department heads, uh, status as far as, uh, what's going on with their budget and their fund spending this part during the year. And I also asked department heads to start working on their spending estimates and think about what kind of projects and, um, activities they want to follow in the year. Uh, all the department heads asked to finish their, uh.
Their set. I, everyone is what I have up here.
Sorry. Okay, there we go. So, once I get.
Hold on, I muted.
Heads, sorry?
I don't know.
There's a lag. I apologize, everybody. So, once we have input from the department heads, um, I look at any other, uh, trending information, anything that might have some impact on our revenues or expenditures, uh. The COVID pandemic situation this year happened kind of too late for us to really incorporate it and we didn't have enough information to come up with intelligent guesses about how that might affect us. So, we made the decision to go ahead and, uh, work with the budget as it stands. Uh, we're just gonna keep an eye on our spending and make sure that that is in line with what is actually happening with our revenues. Anyway, uh, once I have, uh, tentative numbers together, then we start the special process. We have budget workshops and meetings and we talk about all the details, all the ins and outs of all the accounts until we are all happy, or at least are all content. And then we get to this point where we present it to the public and take questions and collect it. Okay, so we're gonna get the sewer funding into the general fund. Here's a few shots of our sewer line. The, there it is. We have not made any changes to the rates, the sewer rates are the same as they were last year. Um, I'm not sure you guys can see those numbers. It's smaller. Our expected revenues are going to be $66,847.7. Uh, pretty similar to last year's and our budget appropriations are the same, $966,347. So, we do not expect to have any, um, borrow money or pull from, uh, like that, uh. It is good. Here's a breakdown of the general categories and spending. Or this is service to the sewer for the community, uh, at least 7%. We have 21% of the budget is for generals or like vacation, uh, of general things that the office, all everyone's salaries and then we have 12% is employee benefits and 10% incident service, similar to last year's. Any questions on that so far?
Okay. I just can't see it. So, tell me what you got here, girl.
Okay. Moving on to the general fund. The tax rate also has been estimated as we made revenues of $3,844,000. And our budget appropriations are the same. We do not expect to need to pull any funds from our fund bill in the general fund either.
Who is muting me?
What's that? Do you have a question?
Yeah, no, I was just wondering who's muting me, uh, nothing.
Dude, I'm, I'm muting everybody because there's, it's, it's interfering with her talk, her talking. So, I'm just muting everybody.
Well, that makes sense, okay.
Can everyone understand me?
Yeah, I could understand.
Okay, okay. So far, so good. And then here's a chart of our estimated revenues, about half, 51% is expected from county sales tax. Um, if we do see, if we do take a hit due to the pandemic, it's gonna, almost all of it is gonna come from a reduction in the sales tax that we received. So, we're gonna watch that very closely. Then we have 21% property taxes, 15% other taxes, fees, other income like that. And then this is state sources, our cell phone towers, and this is, uh, payments and lieu of taxes or pilot income. Any questions so far?
No.
Okay. Whoops. Okay, and I know this one is a little crazy, but I wanted to put it here and just point out the larger chunks of our spending, our anticipated expenditures. 40% is slated to go to the Department of Public Works.
Hey, Marsha, I'm sorry. It's really down low on the screen, so it's hard to see. I think if you, if you make it bigger, if you go, you should be able to, like zoom in, you can make it bigger. You should be able to. There's this zoom button, but it's making it very low on the screen.
I'm not seeing a zoom button. I have it on full screen. I don't know how to make it bigger. I'm sorry.
Everyone individually can zoom in. If you, if you scroll to the right of the thing, that all of a sudden taps in the soup and you hit the plus and it makes it bigger on your screen.
And you can click to drag it upward, everybody.
But you do that, you do that individually.
Was that Don? Thank you. Um, let's see, okay. This green is our, uh, like the office, the clerk, the treasurer, tax collection, assessor, things like that. And then, let's see, this one is employee benefits at 17.8% and building maintenance is just under 11%. Does anyone have questions about this so far? Okay, I wanted to put Jake on the spot briefly and, um, Jake, is there anything that you'd like to share about what you have in the works for TPW this year? Maybe touch on the, uh, that sewer, like, project?
Yes, one of the things that we had, I don't know if everybody can hear me, um, but one of the things for sewer was a, uh, a pipe project on Phillips Road, um, approximately, uh, it was about 1,000 feet or so, 1,200 feet, um, from basically the middle of Xerox campus there along Phillips Road to Chino to Drive, just to do some lining in there and some repairs or upgrades for the sewer. Uh, as far as the general budget and the TPW highway, we had numerous projects planned, um, as Marsha indicated from the, at the beginning of this discussion. Um, those will, we will, we will spend once we know, I guess that we have it coming in. Um, so it's kind of a, uh, you know, self-regulating. I think that's what the state did as far as their budget, past the past gas that they have. Um, but then, you know, verify that revenues are coming in before we make big expenditures and start to arrive as we can scale things up and down, um, as needed. And I think that my expectation is it will probably do less than what we had originally planned, um, but we'll certainly try to do the most that we can with what, you know, what we have. Um, and then also be in a position, because, uh, the climate and everything that's going on, we're certain that there's probably gonna be some sort of stimulus, um, activity by the federal government or state government, uh, to try and get things moving along. And we wanna be in a position to, uh, utilize that if we can do other projects, so.
Thanks Jake. Awesome. Uh, this concludes my official presentation and I can't be to yield any kind of questions or if you wanna talk about, um, I don't know, any, any pandemic related money stuff or any other questions, I'm, I'm here.
Hi. Money's coming.
Thank you so far, okay.
Marsha.
Yes?
Do you anticipate any monies coming in from, uh, state or federal government in terms of, uh, it's a pandemic relief?
Um, I would be surprised if that didn't, but, um, I haven't seen any, uh, specifics or even any estimates of what that might look like.
All of you are aware of my email I sent around, uh, not too long ago, about this damn thing.
I can't understand what you're saying.
Did anybody see that?
I can't understand what you're saying.
Carl, there was a real.
Carl, is your phone off? I want you to turn it off.
You guys, come on. Wait a minute. Oh, Daryl, can you hear me now?
Okay.
Uh, so you're thinking best, you're thinking best to move forward with, uh, just watching the budget and not plan for any COVID?
Um, and not plan for it? I don't know how you plan for it.
Well, you can, we can make the judgment. You guys, or if I have to get off.
Well, Daryl, anything else on you or phone? Everybody has to make sure you're muted if they're not speaking, because it's calling. You have to make sure to unmute yourself.
Don't you, he's just gonna hook you himself.
Yeah, you can't have more than one device on and not.
Why are you taking?
That's a no.
Okay, whatever. That's better.
That's better. Better now.
Okay, uh.
Okay, sorry Jerry.
I was, is I was saying, is there a way that we can allow some funding or, uh, a rebate in case someone on one of the boards passes away so that we can take care of the families without, uh, asking everyone for donations and all that kind of stuff? Like about $400 a year?
I think, uh, Don answered it. I don't know if you've ever seen my emails, Carl.
Um, I have looked.
I did respond and I wasn't probably, um, you probably don't like emails so much because I think some of the comments you made in there, whenever it's great that you do these kind of things for people, but to, um, say other people fail to do so or whatever the comment you made, uh, to pressure staff or board members, um, to donate money, it's a personal thing. It's about relationships and that's up to the individual. And I, and I don't think at any time that anyone should be pressured into do so. It's strictly voluntary. So, I did respond to that.
Yeah, that's fine, but I'm just asking if we can include some money in the budget for that.
Yeah, Don answered that.
Carl, I sent, I sent an email in response to your inclusion. You were included. This topic came up several years ago before you were on the board, because I think in the past, the village, it has sent cards and flowers and things like that. And you can't do that. It is illegal. It violates the New York State Constitution. Within the New York State Constitution, it expressly prohibits state, the state, towns, villages, city from making any kind of gifts. And this would be in the nature of a gift. So, you, you can't, you can't budget for it. It's not a, it's not a permitted use of taxpayer money, because it's not governmental function to provide flowers or cards when somebody passes away. So, regrettably, ended. Answer back, love. Thank you.
But I think it would be, um, I think that putting it out there, uh, if anybody would like to, uh, donate, to, uh, do that, do anything that, uh, uh, would be put forth, uh, you can do that as a donation, but that has to be an individual thing without basically with pressure.
If, if you wanted to do something like the beginning of every, you know, village year, calendar year, whatever you want, everybody kicks in $20 and Heather holds it in some special, kind of somewhere, not the name of the village, but in her name or somebody's name, and then when this comes up, there's a little private slush fund to pay for these things. You could do that.
Is there any way we can get back to the agenda real quick and talk about, I, I do think we need to plan, um, for a reduction in sales tax money. I think that would be in the best interest of everybody in the village.
Are you thinking we should adopt a budget that reflects that reduction?
I do. I could kill on that. We're gonna get killed on that sales tax reduction for sure.
But we, I think we will on the revenue side, if I can, yeah, Jack, and I know, Marsha, and I talked about this and I talked about it with the mayor, uh, last week and kind of that's, I, I think the discussion was following the state. Um, what they're doing, for example, was basically passing a regular budget and then modifying it based on the reality, because we really, there's nothing to base this on. So, we can speculate. I mean, there's, even the healthcare, the impact on healthcare, I was reading today, would be, you know, between 50 billion and, you know, 500 billion. They have no idea how much this is gonna cost and how much it's gonna impact. Um, so, you know, seeing that we're, you know, smaller, smaller government, we're really close and thought, you know, before we go buy a vehicle, we're gonna make sure that we have revenues that are being realized before we, and if we don't, we'll make those adjustments and kind of self-regulate without, what I hate to see is we, we, you know, assume that it's gonna be really bad and maybe it's not as bad, but we already cut everything out of our budget, so we can't provide additional services to our residents or, you know, or, you know, pave those roads or, you know, fix things that we're trying to get done and we cut ourselves short because we cut our budget short. Um, if we leave the budget how it is, we can regulate based on the fact that if something's not coming in, we'll, you know, work very closely, and we always do every, anyway, but we'll even be tied around that to make sure that, hey, if the revenues aren't coming in, we're not going to, you know, pave these streets, we're gonna do some other maintenance stuff. That's the way we kinda look at it.
We're just fine. We're not, if we have a bell, uh, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be. So, I guess Jake, what you're saying is, I think if the department heads just identify where we would make up the shortfall, um, that would just be great, just so we know. Uh, and I know you're referring to paving, um, but is there, is there other things on both sides that we can do? Uh, we just need to be prepared. That's all I'm saying.
I, I, I would agree with that. So, uh, let's open this up to, um, any, uh, public, uh, comment, um, man of the open the, uh, public, uh, jury. I have a motion. Everybody wanna make a motion to open the, uh, what you're doing?
I'll make that.
I'll check it.
Uh huh.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Belito?
Hi.
Trustee Bokke?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, the floor is now open to anyone who would like to address the board, I believe. Uh, there was a number posted for you to call in. Heather, do we have that?
We have one person on, um, so we just ask that you please state your name and address and then you can, the floor is yours. I think, um, his name is Mr. Reynolds. I don't know if he wants to speak.
Do you have to unmute him?
I think he can. I, I only muted, um, us.
Yeah, she can only, she only muted the, uh, our partner. Well, while I, uh, while we're waiting for him, I'll, I'll ask you a question. Marsha, maybe you can answer. Are we able to, um, modify the budget mid-year if need to?
Sure. Yeah. Maybe it's easier if we just, we, we look at, uh, more significant modification than we usually make. Uh huh. And that could go either way. If you guys, if we decide to adopt the budget as it currently stands, um, and then make changes to reduce our revenue when we have more information, we can do that or we can, uh, start, start with kind of the worst base numbers and, um, add in more projects and, um, purchases and, uh, becoming available.
I think I'd be open to, uh, going forward with what we are, uh, monitoring closely and then, and then, um, bringing this back to the table, um, if we gotta modify the budget on, on revenues.
Okay.
And then, and then I still would be in favor of, um, seeing something arriving from the department heads on where they would make up the shortfall. I think that'd be important for the rest of the board to just know where it's coming from.
You mean what? What?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone disagree or agree?
No, I agree that, uh, there should be something from all the departments that, uh, uh, could be, uh, cut made if, uh, there needs to be. And I agree, you can add and not be caught, um, you know, scrambling a little bit later on, so.
Yeah, just give us an idea. You know, we don't know what we're ready to be, we don't know what we're ready to have, so it's very difficult.
Yep.
Good luck Jake.
Okay, so I just got a text from Peter that, um, uh, Mr. Reynolds is having some trouble, so, um, he said that we could go ahead and give him. So, I don't think there are any other speakers.
Carl, can you hear me? This is.
Oh, yeah.
And that. Good evening. I just had a couple, I just, uh, I think I just typed it in. There's a chat, but I don't know if everybody can read the chats or not. Um, I, I have a, I do have, um, a comment to make regarding the sales tax, uh, potential shortfall. If, you know, maybe it would be wise to, you can continue the budget process as is, but, you know, on the sideline, develop some scenarios in advance, um, so that you would be, at least be able to then, you know, monitor those monies coming in and then, you know, uh, we could put in, you could put in, uh, play, you know, uh, scenario A, you know, a 5% shortfall. Okay, well, we, because you know when those monies are gonna be coming in. They come in quarterly, so, uh, you would be able to then address, you know, your budget almost on a quarterly basis, you know, and based on where that budget comes in on that quarter, you know, if it's a 5% redo or redux or 10% or whatever it is, um, then you would basically already have your scenarios laid out for you. You would just be able to enact that.
That's good. I like it. Uh huh. I like it.
Hey Matt, why have, while you're on the phone, are you, are you, um, I don't know if Daryl will give you that or not yet about looking at all different avenues, uh, for us to recoup some money, um, if you've been asked to do it or not yet?
Well, I haven't had a, a direct, uh, conversation regarding that with the mayor at this time. Um, however, obviously I'm monitoring all, uh, fiscal stimulus, uh, packages that could be coming out. As of right now, the only things that have been passed by the state or federal government are related to compensating employees, employers, uh, individuals. There's very little, uh, funds that would be available to municipalities other than for maybe additional overtime, uh, uh, as, as a cold. COVID-19 response. So, the federal enactment may have had some monies in there for, uh, additional overtime monies for municipalities, but it's, it's pretty small potatoes. It's nothing that would, uh, be able to balance your budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, just keep on looking out for us.
Okay, if there are any, um, comments or comments, uh, at this time that I would ask for, uh, a motion to, um, close the meeting or close the shut public hearing.
I'm making a motion. I'll second.
Trustee Belito?
Hi.
Trustee Bokke?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Uh, I guess I would, uh, next go just to public comment if there is anybody who just generally wants to speak, not necessarily to the budget, because that hearing was closed. But if you have a public comment, is there anybody who found that I would like to report?
because that hearing was closed, but if you have a public comment, is there anybody who found that that would like to report? Apparently not. All right, and I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting to the scheduled agenda. Uh, first item on the agenda is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants from the last cycle, three twelve twenty through four oh eight twenty. I have a motion to, um, approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Balke?
Hi.
Trustee Ibelito?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Next we have a, um, resolution to, uh, for reduction of the, for grant. Uh, this would be a, um, a change from five hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand because the, uh, directors at the Harmony House at this time do not wish to participate in this grant. Therefore, uh, that will eliminate one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, that was part of the five hundred thousand for the grant. So, uh, at this particular time, I would ask, uh, for a, um, motion to confirm the reduction of this restoration from five hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars so that it is available to, um, pay, uh, Charlie Fitzsimmons, um, for the work done.
I'll make that motion.
Stand.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Balke?
Hi.
Trustee Ibelito?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Heather, if you could just get the resolution to Matt that he can submit it to the higher state development?
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Is that just, that would just be my signature, Don?
Yeah, I sent, I sent a proposed resolution for, you know, so you just gotta fill in, who made the motion, who seconded it, then sign it.
Okay. I thought so. I didn't know Daryl needed to sign anything to.
Yeah, just, just you and then get it to Matt so he can forward it to, uh, Restore New York.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, we have one more item, uh, before we adjourn. That is, um, there are a number of items that, uh, are going to be declared, um, surplus. And, uh, Jake, I would just ask you to mention a few of them or all of them.
Which one we looking at? But we can't hear one of them. You're muted Jake. Hold on, let me see, I'm not muted.
I'm muted now, I hope. Am I unmuted now? No, you muted me again.
No, you're good. I hear ya.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, we're just looking for, I sent an email out, but, uh, there's five items. First is our brush bandit. That's our old wood chipper. Uh, the next one would be our TPW gator, uh, that, that was a little John near our TV. Um, the other is the water department gator. Um, we have a jumping jack tamper, which is this little handheld tamper. Or, uh, you know, it's not the big plain tamper. It's a smaller footprint on it. And then a diesel standby generator. That's the one in the garage. Um, that's, uh, was just replaced. We got the generator last year or so. Um, I'd like to see if we can get a, a surplus declaration, I don't know if it's authorization, uh, authorization to dispose of. Um, probably gonna be through an auction, um, because, you know, the standby generator, I'm gonna try to get the first four into the auction this year. Uh, which is gonna continue with a normal municipal auction, but it'll be online only. Um, and then the diesel generator, uh, gonna try to get into a monthly deduction. We don't, we wouldn't have to move it. We just have to have it, uh, ready to go. Um, and not have to move it down to Belmire, so. Okay, uh, well, I would, uh, like then entertain a motion to declare these items as, uh, surplus, that they can, uh, be, uh, tentatively taken to auction.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Balke?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. You're welcome. Uh, again, in terms of announcements, um, I would say that, um, uh, village hall is, uh, still closed. Uh, it is open for phone calls. You can call in. Emergencies will be, uh, directed to, uh, TPW and, uh, they are handling those. Um, obviously we are awaiting the opening of, uh, government offices by the governor. So, um, can certainly look, uh, and keep a, a rise in, uh, of, of that situation, uh, on the news. The, um, uh, next, uh, village board meeting is, uh, going to be held again via, uh, teleconference. That will be on April twenty-third, twenty twenty at seven, uh, o'clock. And that will be primarily to, um, uh, pass, uh, the budget to vote on the budget. Uh, if there is, are any questions that, uh, were not necessarily addressed or comments that people would like to, uh, uh, address, uh, you can send those, uh, or call them in. They will be directed, uh, to the board members or contact the board member and they will pass, uh, uh, those questions for, for an answer. Um, so, uh, that will be April twenty-third. Uh, we are going to be moving at the conclusion of this meeting into an executive session uh, to discuss the collective bargaining, uh, negotiations that are pursuant to Article fourteen of the civil service law. Um, so, uh, may I have a, uh, motion to move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations in pursuant to Article fourteen of the civil service law at the conclusion of, uh, this meeting?
Mayor Byers, you have to adjourn first. I apologize.
Right, okay, then I will call for that.
Well, now, if you, if you take the motion. Take my phone. If you go into the executive session. All right, who wants to, uh, when you're back on with us, rule.
No, no, you gotta take the phone. You have to take a phone so that the clerk can record who voted to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ibelito?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Balke?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes. And then Mayor Byers, I'm sorry, we had one, um, just comment from, um, Peter Elder. He wanted me to say, um, he said, please let the board know that they are doing a great job and publishing the meeting is great. Thank you.
Thank you Peter. Appreciate that.
Uh, okay, we, um, close the meeting and, uh, at that point then we will move into executive session. I have a motion to, um, close the meeting?
Make that. I'll second it. How's that funny?
Trustee Ibelito?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Balke?
Hi.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Thank you all for, and, uh, look forward to, uh, uh, talking with you all again. Probably next, uh, we'll be seeing you, uh, April twenty-third unless we see you. We'll be doing that. Have a good night.